All right, I'm gonna bring this, uh, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call. McKnight.
Myers.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Hi.
Kinder.
Here.
Sledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment on the flag?
Uh, yes, I have Jason Ramsey. He actually has two topics. One is Vince Tranga and the other is zoning and tobacconists.
I promise I'll only use five minutes for both of them. Um, the first, I just wanted to, um, I saw in the agenda that Sergeant Tranga was retiring and I just wanted to make a quick statement about that, that, um, my son Eli was a crossing guard at First District and it meant the world to him to be part of a program that, um, that at the time Officer Tranga ran and he thought the world of him and it really had for fifth grade, sixth grade, um, to be able to be enrolled and things like that was, it was a special time and, and we have placed our hearts for him. So I just wanted to put that in public record for what it's worth and, and he'll be missed for sure on the force. The second item is on the, um, on the discussion that's gonna happen about tobacconists and as representing the planning commission, I'm the chair of the planning commission. We had a conversation about this at our last meeting and I wanted to reiterate the planning commission's recommendation that we, um, uh, focus on the general business district and EDC zones for tobacconists and the key piece to that being that those uses be only allowed via special permission. It's that, that is the most critical piece. The location, we had a wide range of conversation with the planning commission about, about all the different aspects. And I could, uh, we talked a lot in that meeting, it's a really good conversation, but I, I have to keep it in five minutes. But the critical piece to that is introducing a check on the potential for organizations like that. If, if they can't come to a zoning hearing board and pay the minimal amount of money that it costs to, um, request that they be granted that special exception. Really speaks to the lack in the business plan that they might have and that obstacles what's stopping them from, from coming into town. And in general, with the, um, the sense of the planning commission is that, um, we need to be very careful about thinking about the impact on potential businesses and residents nearby and kind of what, what could potentially happen when you have one that is near you. With that in mind, we are also, um, we know that there's been some conversations about kind of distance from schools, parks, churches and, and areas that are potentially a detriment to, um, or the, the, I'm sorry, making word salad out of this, uh, the potentially detriment, the vape shops are potentially a detriment to them. And our sense was that we could reduce the, from 500 to 250 feet to make that be something where we could actually, potentially have shops, whereas I know the conversation at council earlier and in general, when you do, when you draw on the map 500 feet, it really restricts them, essentially restricts them from even existing. So, um, reducing that to 250 feet away from schools in particular, um, parks, churches, less so, but schools were kind of a, a critical piece to that. But again, reiterating the need for a special exception rather than, um, a, a general permitted use at any zone. And that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
That's all.
Um, notice of executive session meetings?
None.
Um, approval of minutes, February 4th, 2025, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Hi.
Kinder.
Hi.
Communications?
None.
Um, managers report.
Uh, so a couple items. So you may have seen in the newspaper that the city was awarded some grants through the Office of the State Fire Commissioner. This would be for fire at $16,368. That money will be used to outfit the new, the new used fire truck that was purchased and just finalized that project. And then the EMS at $15,000. That will go towards paying off the purchase of the heart monitor, one of the heart monitors. Uh, the, speaking of the fire truck, the new used fire truck has arrived. It's currently being outfitted and will hopefully be in service by mid-March. In front of you, I did pass out, just as an FYI, the Pennsylvania Municipal League and the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Commissioners have released their 2025 legislative priorities. You'll see some familiar ones on there. One of those is the use of radar for municipal police departments. Changing of the Act 511 local service tax. Eliminating the rate cap on the earned income tax and authorizing a favorable tax. There are also some mentions of portable housing, reliable local transportation infrastructure funding as well. Again, just an FYI, might be asked to write some letters of support for the municipal league if it comes down to that.
Um, I, in case you haven't been, I'm, I'm on the board.
Okay.
Of the, the legislative lobbying board for the community development.
Um, and then the last update is that the city has reinstated corporal positions within the police department. And this, after some testing, civil service testing, four patrolmen were promoted to the corporal, Pat Karn, Jeff Dan, Dan Palca, and Tim Fuller. The cost of that will be offset by the removal of the pay differential for on duty or shift differential pay.
Why? Like what, what, what was the?
To give some incentive to, for people to look forward to and moving up in the ranks. Um, we already have two K-9 handlers, probably won't have that position become open again for another couple of years. Sergeant positions are all been filled. Force is relatively young, so to give them something to be motivated to work towards and look forward to.
That's great. Can you just recap what the positions are, like what the kind of ladder?
Sure. So you have, uh, patrolman, then it goes to the corporal, then to sergeant, and then ultimately detective and chief.
So it's, it's between the patrolman and sergeant?
How did, so was the pay before for the shift work, how was that?
Four percent pay differential, when, if a sergeant was off on vacation or, or whatnot, there'd be an officer, patrolman on duty would receive the four percent pay differential. Now there's going to be a corporal on every shift who gets a four percent pay differential between sergeant and patrolman.
Are they job duties in differ? Do they do anything with this?
No, I mean, they kind of know the rule whenever, um, the sergeant isn't there on the shift of what duties they have to, to step into. That's, that's about it. If someone were to ask for a patrolman for a superior officer, they could, and the sergeant was unavailable, they could call the corporal and that's the superior officer.
Incentivize people to stay and continue working.
Correct.
Great.
That's all, yeah. Does anybody have any other questions? Um, old business discussion, zoning ordinance amendment, tobacconist.
All right, this is coming before you, uh, again, in a revised form following the planning commission meeting. As, uh, Mr. Ramsey had, uh, pointed out, uh, over the past two weeks, I've individually answered every question that you've, uh, posed to me. So, uh, here it is before you again, and hereon I submit all of your court to, uh, with what to do about it or to it. We'll note that there is a mistake in the header, uh, which only references a special exception in the GBM district and EDC. It had been revised, uh, to be GBM, EDC, mixed use three, and mixed use two districts. All right, in the actual body of the test.
And the other changes that we're seeing are the, um, reduction to 250 feet from schools. And.
Yeah.
Primary portion of trade in definition for what constitutes tobacconists.
Uh, the only other one. Yep, the only other one to add to that would be that the earlier, uh, provision related to hours of operation from seven to nine would only apply to the mixed use two districts, consistent with all the other neighborhood oriented businesses.
Okay. Are there hour, are there hour stipulations in the other districts?
Uh, mixed use one.
Okay, but we're not considering any mixed use one.
Correct.
I just have a question. In section JJ, outdoor sales and product displays are prohibited. I'm thinking of a store downtown on Chestnut Street that has, that looks to be a carved wooden eagle. I kind of like it upfront. That wouldn't prevent tobacconists from having a similar display because it's not a product display. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But if it were.
If they had cigars in there.
Right, yeah, if there were giant cigars, maybe it wouldn't.
I would probably support this answer.
Would it include like current air dancer, like they, they can keep theirs because it's already there? That was.
Do grandfather and air dancer.
Do you, yeah, grandfather and air dancer, yeah.
Again, that's questionable because it's not a permanent fixture, it's a portable fixture and it would not be depriving them of that piece of property. It would, um, I believe that it would be perfectly legal to phase that out because it is a date minimum, effective business. To throw in some Latin.
Uh, I just had that clarifying question for Jason, actually, in planning commission.
That'd be great, because I was kind of all over the place because I was standing podium, I got all of those.
I, I heard you say, um, that the planning commission had discussed, uh, special except, special exception in the general business manufacturing and the EDC. Did you talk about mixed use two and three?
We did.
And, yeah, what's the second?
And so, I mean, and so the, the, the key piece is that as long as there's special exception, zoning, so for a planning commission is, is, is fine with kind of opening things up. So, so if I can, if I could characterize just a little bit more, I, we had, we had concerns about kind of essentially creating a district in which all the zoning or all the tobacconists would, would be in and essentially keeping them in only one specific focused area. And also just in general, a concern about kind of restricting possible use of, like, you're putting a bit of a straitjacket on it by saying you're only gonna allow it in, in certain zones. As long as that special exception piece is in, then introducing it to MU2, MU3 was, was more comfortable to the planning commission because, again, stressing the, the special exception piece being the most critical. So I think we went with, with GBM, EDC, but, but I, I, I mean, and I'm speaking just as myself, as chair, I can't speak completely for the planning commissions, but I, I, we would have a general sense that that'd be okay, I'm pretty sure.
Thank you for clarifying. Um, Jim, for just for bases.
If that's the consensus of council, then it'll appear on the March, first meeting of March agenda for first and second reading.
I've talked with the county planning commission and they are willing to accept it for consideration at their planning commission meeting at the end of month.
And they, uh, they have to see it first because this is an amendment towards on ordinance?
Yes.
And then they give feedback?
Yes.
Right? Can, uh, we send special, not special word, but can we send word to, I think like Meadville had gotten a lot of folks through the hearing? Just as a follow-up to say it's gonna be on the agenda?
Yes. All right, uh, new business ordinance, first and second reading, fireman's pension fund. Can I have a motion to approve first reading of the fireman's pension fund? So moved. Second. Discussion?
So although the contract, the CBA was passed by council last, the end of last year, the conversion of defined contribution to defined benefit is codified via ordinance. So what's before you encompasses that conversion. It also does change the vesting age from 12 years to 10 years. Uh, that's after some discussion with one of the attorneys at Knox. This is to help qualify the defined benefit pension plan as a social security equivalent. Because firemen do not collect social security, they do not pay into social security. So we have to make sure that their pension plan is classified by the IRS as a equivalent one.
What are the implications of that? What would that do?
Is that the 40 quarters for social security, which is 10 years?
It's, yes, yes. Uh, what is going, I'm sorry.
What is it, what is it doing that do?
Make sure that they're equivalent, uh, so that the firemen continue not to have to pay into social security, also relieving the city from having to contribute to social security.
So if it were at the 12, is it, was it 12?
12.
Change from, it were, it had been 12 years, does it fit?
Correct. We would have had, the city would have had to pay in as well as the individual.
Um, roll call.
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 161 of the Meadville Municipal Code, known as the Fireman's Pension Fund, providing for an effective date severability and a repealer. Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Hi.
Kinder.
Hi. Can I have a motion to approve second reading?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Hi.
Kinder.
Hi. Uh, res- resolution recognizing John Nelson upon retirement? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville recognizing John Nelson upon his retirement. Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that whereas John Nelson has served as a valued employee of the city of Meadville for a total of 22 years, having served as a collection system technician for the Meadville Area Sewer Authority. Whereas Mr. Nelson opted to retire from his most recent position as equipment operator with the city of Meadville. And whereas Mr. Nelson has performed the duties of his position with dedication, thoughtfulness, and accuracy. And whereas Mr. Nelson has elected to fully retire from active employment with the city of Meadville and will be sorely missed by his coworkers. Now and forever be it resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that John Nelson is hereby commended for his years of loyal service and dedicated service to this community and its citizens. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville, that the best wishes of the city are extended to Mr. Nelson for every success in the future. Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Hi.
Kinder.
Hi. Um, resolution recognizing Michael Westcott upon retirement? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Uh, discussion?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville recognizing Michael Westcott upon his retirement.
Darla, can I read this one?
Oh, you sure may. You can do them all.
Resolved by the city, or by council of the city of Meadville that whereas Michael Westcott has served as a valued employee of the city of Meadville for a total of 29 years, having served as an operator for the Meadville Area Sewer Authority. Whereas Mr. Westcott opted to retire from his most recent position as equipment operator with the city of Meadville. And whereas Mr. Westcott has performed the duties of his position with dedication, thoughtfulness, and accuracy. And whereas Mr. Westcott has elected to fully retire from, from active employment with the city of Meadville and will be sorely missed by his coworkers. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that Michael Westcott is hereby commended for his many years of loyal and dedicated service to this community and its citizens. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that the best wishes of the city are extended to Mr. Westcott for every success in the future. Uh, roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Hi.
Kinder.
Hi. Um, resolution recognizing Vince Tranga upon retirement? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville recognizing Vince Tranga upon his retirement.
Uh, resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that whereas Vince Tranga has served as a valued employee of the city of Meadville for a total of 26 years, having served as an officer and sergeant for the Meadville City Police Department. Whereas Sergeant Tranga opted to retire from his most recent position as school resource officer with the city of Meadville. And whereas Sergeant Traga, Tranga has performed the duties of his position with dedication, thoughtfulness, and accuracy. And whereas Sergeant Tranga has elected to fully retire from active employment with the city of Meadville and will be sorely missed by his coworkers. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that Vince Tranga is hereby commended for his many years of loyal and dedicated service to this community and its citizens. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that the best wishes of the city are extended to Sergeant Tranga for every success in the future. Roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel. Kinder.
Hi. Thank you. Resolution ratifying signatures, 2025, 2026, Co-Stars salt participation agreement.
As council knows, public works purchases that, uh, say salt through a Co-Stars agreement, this is the state's cooperative purchasing program that allows the city to leverage contracts established by the Department of General Services to cost effectively and efficiently identify suppliers and purchase in bulk from those suppliers so we get the best rate. This contract before you, like the ones in previous years, uh, is for a minimum of 1,500 tons. We do not know the price yet. That will come probably in August as we get closer to the season. I can tell you that this year we paid $65.35 per ton and ended up ordering 2,142 tons of salts totaling $138,770 and some change.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll take it. Uh, discussion?
Quick question. We have to purchase 1,500, but you could purchase, we, are, we use 1,700?
We, we use a little over 2,000 tons.
2,000 and you can go up to 40% over the minimum in, in Co-Stars?
Correct.
Okay, and so it, that'll all fit within the parameters, yeah, 40% more, yeah.
Um, a, a quick question that is, that may be off topic, but, um, we haven't had any issues with getting sold or anything, right?
We have.
Have we? Because I, I saw that, right, like if that is across the board, but I just wasn't sure how we were.
We did, um, at one point last month, it was very.
Yeah, and it all came at once, they had 13 semis in them one day. Yeah.
I mean, we had a lot of stuff. I just was, was wondering how, how that affected us and that, you know, I mean, we, the roads have been wonderful. I mean, they've done a really, really good job, that's why I was wondering.
Yes, we, we did have an issue. It got a little scary for a moment.
Yeah. Uh, do we have any ballpark of what, like if we were to go it alone and get?
You can't, you can't get it.
You can't even do it?
Mm-mm, no.
Because you can't, because you can't secure the.
You can't get that much.
Bulk of, yeah.
Nope.
Yeah, well, that's great, then there's power and urgency. And so there's not even an option.
And that's what we do with COG, right?
The French, the council.
Well, I guess.
Do, we all, we buy salt together, or is that?
This dip, a little bit different, um, I think the latest COG initiative might be some multi-municipal paving projects. But same, similar concept.
Co-Stars is state?
Correct.
I wasn't sure if some of the smaller municipalities needed to go in, you know, with a larger, that's why I was.
They do typically participate with Co-Stars, it's how we purchase vehicles and things like that.
This is a good time to ask, to put it in front of us. It's like, it's like salt is necessary, right?
Yeah.
Very much, very much so. Uh, roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Hi.
Kinder.
Hi. Uh, motion, uh, Crawford County Tax Collection, Collection, geez, oh man. Committee appointments? Oh yeah, can I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion?
Stop is suggesting to appoint April Smith and Tracy Wilcox as the two representatives. April as the delegate, Tracy as the alternate to the tax collection committee. Tim Groves, former finance director, was the previous delegate. This is a, a reference, this committee is made up of delegates and alternate delegates from around 40 different townships, 15 boroughs, two cities, and school districts. The committee is responsible for making sure Crawford County earned income taxes are collected from anyone who works in the county and distributed to the local municipality and school district where that individual resides. They typically meet once a year. This year, they are going to sign a new 10-year agreement with Berkhimer, who collects our municipal earned income taxes.
I, do you know, like the, I'm just curious about the contract with Berkhimer. If, are there, if they just, are there any terms or anything? Is there a, like, in terms of, they, obviously we pay them something. Is it like Co-Stars, they get it to scatter?
They have their own rate.
They do, okay.
Yeah, yep, I see it every month, um, what they're, you know, what they charge.
Yeah.
Um, but they're, they're kind of their own entity.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you consent to being the delegate?
Yeah.
Um, there's room on here for a second delegate, do we not normally have a second?
We haven't even had an alternate delegate.
Okay.
So I feel like I'm getting somewhere.
Right on.
Does anybody have any other questions? Roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Hi.
Kinder.
Hi. Motion beautification committee bylaws, apprable, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
I'll turn this over to Peter in a moment, um, but the council recalls the beautification committee has never had bylaws. Uh, so this is a proposal for the incorporation of bylaws into the committee. And Peter, I don't know if you want to touch on what is covered in those?
No, uh, well, the bylaws, uh, I believe were modeled pretty much on the EACs with some minor tweaks. As matter of the beautification committee itself did scrutinize these. So they're enthusiastic about, um, well, not enthusiastic, they are willing participants in, uh, in, in running a tighter ship. So bylaws are required by the ordinance that we passed controlling the beautification committee passed September. And frankly, I just think that they're good practice when there are gaps in procedure that in ordinance itself can't or doesn't cover.
Peter, I have a question from the section of forum. It consists of five members physically present at a regular special meeting. Did they consider, because sometimes they have a problem getting a forum. Did they consider, uh, meeting by telephone or Zoom?
I believe that by state regulations, participating remotely does not count towards forum.
So during.
And that's for us, I'm guessing?
It does not, so, um, during COVID, there was a, an emergency executive order that allowed forum meetings and quorums to be done virtually. Since that's lapsed, it's gone back to the original rules. You have to have a forum in person to be able to hold the meeting. Now someone can vote, as long as you have a forum, someone can vote via phone or Zoom, whatnot, and that counts, but.
So there's, there are two of us here and one electronic person, you don't have a forum?
Correct.
Okay.
I did have, just one question, the, um, I was looking here at, and it says something about having the, um, a member of council as a liaison, right? But on most of our boards, um, a, a councilperson, if. But on most of our boards, um, a, a council person, if, uh, they don't have enough members, right, can sit on, on our boards. Is that, is that still?
Yes.
I, I just, the only mention of council people was up in, in that, in that section. That's why I was asking, if it negates that or if it?
Nope, there's still nothing prohibited a council member from serving on the forum.
Article seven, first of all, there are two of them. But the first article seven. Subcommittee and special task forces, I'm, uh, wondering, I mean, this has already been executed by the Beautification Committee, so.
Yeah, the execution doesn't necessarily surpass your approval of it. That just shows their confidence in the strap before you.
Got it.
Nevertheless.
Got it, so not trying to, yeah, tear, tear anything apart. I just wonder if there's an opportunity to more, cause I think the idea of bylaws are to clearly spell out like how the group is gonna govern itself and, um, yeah, we've gotten legal guidance lately about subcommittees and task forces that I think were different than we originally understood. And I don't know that that is clearly, uh, is made clear in this section. And I wonder if it just makes sense to spell it out so that there's like an expectation.
I'll say good catch.
About sunshine laws?
Yeah, about ta, like, does a task force, right, then have to, you know, it, just saying something like that they are subject to sunshine laws or if they are something else, I, I don't know.
Well, just per our legal advice to, to put that in there so that they understand what the formative of a subcommittee would entail.
I can rectify that or delete it entirely. I would also be a little suspicious that the Beautification Committee can appoint members of the general public. That gives me a little bit of pause to that they say within their bylaws that they delegate some of their own judgment to someone who's not approved by council. So I'll bring this up with them and just assume that Article seven will be deleted in its entirety.
Okay.
And instruct them one and twenty about it.
I was thinking of the general public, I think it, well, I, not to nay or, but I think it's kind of like Amara, you know, who, you know, like people who are experts to get amateur therapy, way for you to, to read, to, to language that differently, like have experts come in who know.
Truth be told, nothing really preventing people from asking other people what they think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're just talking about the appointment of, of new members.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just being able to formalize, um, who's making a decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I wonder if there's just a way to distinguish that? Like I think I, I, I like the idea of public being able to engage with like on a specific project or something like with, with the, an ABC. Like I think it's also a nice way of getting people involved, um, who might not otherwise. And I think the EAC, I think like the active transportation, when, when, when the EAC had task forces, there was an active transportation team that had regular participants from the public. But I think that maybe decisions could be made in those subcommittees or something like that, and that was maybe the distinction.
Yeah, it's just kind of re-inventing loose steering committee kind of concept, but, you know, give it a, give it a different thing. It just, now that you bring it up, I'm just saying it's not something that needs to be in the bylaws.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if it is, should make it clear if it's cut, that's probably fine as long as there'll be.
Now, if we delay approving this until it's amended, we can still approve the appointment terms because of its separation.
You could also move to approve it.
Amend it, yeah, and also.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon their, like the Beautification Committee's being okay with, with that amendment.
And that's the two, the two, right, the, the Article seven.
Just to remove Article seven.
And, and then the, the clarity in the, the public, right, the, the appointment or however they're.
I think taking out Article seven means that.
Oh, that, that'll be, yeah.
It would be a drag. Yeah.
Did I make the motion recently?
Yes, you did, Jim.
Then I need to amend the motion to delete the first Article seven.
So it may be.
Second the amendment or something.
So it would be a motion to approve the bylaws subject to the deletion of.
Of the second.
That section.
Article seven, yeah.
And contingent upon approval of the Beautification Committee.
Yes.
Does that need to be seconded?
Yes.
I will second Jim's motion.
Then we have to vote on the second thing, right, on the amendment and then on the motion?
No.
No, okay.
Good. Does anybody have any other questions?
So, uh, what happens now is that Beautification Committee gets to review it with that change. And if they're good with it, then it's considered passed and current bylaws are removed. If not, we'll come back.
Vogel.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Okay. Public comment on non-agenda items.
There was one more motion there.
Oh.
Each.
Oh, there it is, yeah, sorry.
It's all good?
Should, uh, take my glasses off so I could see the paper. Motion Beautification Committee assign, assigning terms of current members. Can I have a motion?
So move.
One second.
Discussion.
Currently, all nine members of the Beautification Committee are up for reappointments at the same time. They have one-year terms. The proposal here is to stagger those terms. So every year, two of the members, except for one year, there'll be three, um, will have to be reappointed.
So since there's a vacancy, we don't have the third person in one of those years?
Correct, so this, in later this month, early next month, we'll run the advertisement to solicit applications for the Beautification Committee.
And EAC.
And EAC.
And so that person would be appointed to then serve a four-year, just to the beginning of a four-year term?
Yes.
Yep. Uh, and, and these end at the end of, of the year that we're in, like December thirty-first of twenty? I think it said that first.
January first, I believe.
Vogel.
Myers? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Now, public comment on agenda, on non-agenda items, sorry.
Yes, yes, um, I do have Jason Ramsey, who'd like to talk about minimum parking. Sure.
Thank you, and thank you for having so many resolutions, because it gave you time to write up my notes a little bit before. So I wanted to talk about parking minimums, this is, this has come up at City Council a little bit. And this became a topic of conversation at the Planning Commission. So, uh, on behalf of Planning Commission, I wanted to speak about what we'd like to see happen. So, um, what are parking minimums as far as we're concerned? It's that new developers are mandated by law, whether they want to or not, to provide a prescribed number of parking spots based on city ordinances. So they have to, they have, they have to provide parking, whether they want to or not. And so I tried to come up with a case against parking minimums that I could talk about here. And I actually was led into a article that I had reviewed on, in, um, planning. It's the American Planning Association website, um, and it talks about a business case for dropping parking minimums. And the tagline is, "In the smallest of towns, in the biggest of cities, these new zoning reform policies help boost small businesses, promote housing development, and put people over parking." It's a really good article. Um, I'm gonna take you through a couple of things. There's a lot of examples of how this has worked in small towns across America. The example it starts off with is Auburn, Maine. A quaint picturesque river town dating back to the eighteenth century with Main Street, historic district and Victorian-era homes, homes, Riverwalk, hockey arena, even a mall. But like lots of smaller towns all over America, COVID ravaged some of its businesses. A Ruby Tuesday's restaurant closed, so did a locally owned brunch place, and a Chinese buffet, and a French cafe, and others. Something had to be done to replace the restaurants and encourage new businesses. So in June twenty twenty-one, the city of twenty-four thousand people eliminated all minimum parking requirements for commercial developments, thus reducing upfront costs for new businesses and expansions. It had an immediate impact. Later that autumn, Olive Garden Restaurant Chain looked to open in Auburn and eye the Ruby Tuesday's site. But under, but the company wanted to build more square footage. Under the old parking regulations, Olive Garden would have had to supply even more parking spaces. But now it didn't, the deal was done and approved. "With COVID, we were searching for any way we could help businesses," said the longtime planning director. "This worked for us and it's setting us apart from other communities." And there's a lot of examples like that in, in the article. Um, and it talks about, indeed, municipal parking reforms to reduce or eliminate parking minimums are such a ma, major movement now across the US that they're spreading and taking off in small-town America. It's such a small but significant step that any city can do to reduce development costs and encourage more commercial and resident, residential growth. Um, the, uh, Director of Strong Towns says, "I don't think there's any small town in America that doesn't want more businesses." The article also talks about parking requirements doing harm. They add costs to the building of housing, and they increase usage of cars, greenhouse gas emissions. They seem to work against almost anything that planners want. One mayor of one of the towns that's highlighted an article said, "Eliminating parking minimums for commercial projects last October was an easy decision because it didn't require any government funding or subsidies." And so the way that I would summarize this is saying that eliminating parking minimums prioritizes people over cars, tax revenue over blight, and helps Meadville do what it does well. We are a small city, and for any city to thrive, it must embrace density oversquirrel, plain and simple. Trying to be something we're not and following the fool's goal of mimicking suburban land use ensures failure. Thank you.
Jason?
Yeah.
Would it be possible for you to email?
Yeah.
That article?
I will absolutely do that. It's a, it's a really good article that just has a lot of different similar examples to Meadville, and I'll, I'll email it around.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jennifer. That is all.
Uh, all right, council member statements? Jen, both of you. So sorry, terrible night.
Happy to be here, as always. With the cold weather, I hope everyone's able to stay, uh, safe and warm, especially with the, uh, front they got coming out of Canada tonight. Looking scary, looking real scary. And, uh, also just as a member of the community, I'm happy to see the, uh, resolutions being made towards the topagness organizations. I'm, uh, excited to see action being taken. Yeah, thank you.
Andrew?
Thank you. Well, the good news is it's almost March, so hopefully the weather will improve. Just a note about parking meters, especially around Island Park where there's three feet of snow. The elderly and the altitudinely challenged have trouble reaching the meters to feed them. Hopefully we cut offenders a break. Okay, good. That's all, Your Honor.
Thanks, Jim, I, I feel, I feel.
I was standing there.
Because the altitudinally challenged is very generous. Gretchen?
Well, I would like to thank John Nelson, Michael Westcott, and Officer Tranga for their service. I do, I'm kind of like Jason, I have a real special place in my heart for Officer Tranga, because I feel like he's done a lot for, for kids and just feeling comfortable with police and, and they just love him. Like, it's just, it's a really, he, he's really done a fabulous job, and I'm thankful for that. And I wanted to shout out to the Beautification Committee for working on the bylaws and for working through, well, I think you guys probably were through all those terms and everything, cause that was pretty complicated. And along with just stay healthy, it's, there's, um, the flu, influenza A is like really flying back, you know, really heavy. I know, I think like at Hamlet, they're asking people to mask and even when you walk out on the street. I don't know about that, but definitely just be safe, wash your hands, you know? Cause that would be it.
Um, no problem? Um, yeah, um, thanks folks for coming tonight. Um, glad to see people here. Are the, are there positions open in light of the retirements? Great, okay, good position open. Yeah, also, um, wanna recognize and thank, uh, John Nelson, Michael Westcott, and Vince Tranga. In particular, like all of them have served over two decades and I, you know, that's a long time to be committed to a, a place and to be a public servant. And, um, I, I think that's, uh, incredible, uh, and I hope that we can continue, um, to, uh, make the City of Meadville one where people can stay here for decades and have a full career. And hopefully things like, um, you know, uh, bringing back the firefighter's pension, right? And, and introducing the corporal, you know, uh, uh, position and, and the police department is, is able to do that. Um, I think that we, uh, have so many people working for our city to keep it running, uh, who are just doing great stuff. And, um, so the more that we could do to, uh, show that appreciation to you all, I think is, is great. And, um, um, and, and hopefully to, to allow these specific, these public service jobs to be recruiters as, as they were for, for these folks. And, um, yeah, thanks, thanks to, uh, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Westcott, and Officer Tranga for, like, just dedicating their, their service and so much of their, uh, their lives, uh, and labor and energy to the city. I, uh, that's, yeah, that's, that's, that's all that I will share tonight.
Thank you, Autumn. I wanna just, um, double down with, with, uh, appreciating, um, John Nelson, Michael Westcott, and Vince Tranga. It is a testament to the city to be able to have jobs that, that can sustain people and families, right? And, uh, I'm really sad to see all of them go, but it is, uh, it, it's great that they have the ability to be able to retire and spend time with their families and, and, um, and also creating an opportunity for, you know, younger people to come in and, and, uh, have the opportunity to work for a place like the city that, um, you can afford to raise a baby here, right? Like, and, and stay here your whole life, so that, that's a beautiful thing. Um, I do wanna remind everybody that, uh, the beloved community, uh, fair is, is coming up. That's tomorrow evening at six. Go and support, it, it's a wonderful event. And, I mean, I, I will be there, uh, but, um, you know, come and see me, you know, you can see everybody else that's there. And, uh, it, it, it just is a wonderful thing that they've been doing for, uh, some time to get us all together, businesses, nonprofits, um, and citizens. And then I, I will second what Daniel said, just, uh, stay warm. We've only got a little bit, a little bit, a little bit to go. Can't wait, I feel like we're almost there, right? Cannot wait for the, the snow to be melted and the sunshine to come, so, um, I think with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
One second. Discussion? Vogel.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.